Number seven, Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mr. Solera.
Here.
Mr. Curtis.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Walden.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Now if you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I don't believe we have any addendum changes or agendas at all. Okay. So, good evening once again and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Samuel Bissell Elementary in RB Chamberlain Middle School. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for December 7th, 2016. I'm Rob Felber and I'm honored to serve as your Board of Education President. Well, it's hard to believe that the second quarter of the school year is coming to an end. And as students prepare for exams and pretty much dreaming of sleeping in, I wanted to just take this time to wish you all a joyous holiday season and a safe and healthy new year. And I know that most of the students' dreams will be about snow days, but they keep dreaming, right? Your Board and administration continue to meet, study, and discuss the long-term financial health of the district. And to date, there have been many focus groups around our district. Noting that we want to be thorough and in our representation of our electorate, our community, the district is also conducting random phone surveys. So you may get one of those calls. Should you receive a call, we highly encourage you to participate and share your opinion. So, one of my briefest reports yet, I'm seeing all the smiling faces of our students, and that's why we're here and we're reminded of them. And so with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you, Mrs. Powers, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families and students. It sure does look festive here in the council chambers. The city of Twinsburg always does a great job in the month of December. And we thank Mayor Yates and the city council members for letting us share in the space. And it always looks so very nice. And, boys and girls, don't forget to get some photos by that tree before you leave tonight for your photo album. It looks beautiful, the one in the lobby there. Board of Education, it is a very, very busy time of the year. Mr. Felber just mentioned snow days. And you know, parents, if you've been watching the weather, this week, the end of the week is going to get a little touchy, I think, for us. And so just I want to remind everyone that the process is that about 4:30, quarter to 5:00 in the morning, I actually ride the streets of Twinsburg, the township, and Reminderville. I figure if I can get through in my car, the buses can get through. And my test hill is the Cannon Road Hill. So I get out in the car, and if I can get down Cannon and up Cannon, I think the buses will be just fine. So, we actually drive the roads. And my partner here, who is actually in Florida on vacation, and I chatted earlier today, and he knows that if we were to have an issue with snow on the end of the week, he's the one who actually communicates with our media outlets. So he's doing the computer inside a nice, warm, toasty bedroom, probably. And I'm out driving the streets, but that's okay. That's how it works. He doesn't live in town and I do. So, we do that, and then at the same time, all of our transportation folks are up early and starting the buses, making sure that they're running before the school day begins. We like to try to make sure that by quarter to 6:00 in the morning, parents have been notified. Sometimes that gets a little dicey, depending on the weather. You can't always depend on what's going to happen with the wind chill and the wind and the blowing snow. So we do the best we can and just stay up and make sure you have your eye on the various media outlets, too, because we do communicate with them as soon as the decision is made. Additionally, we do make that Blackboard Connect call to everyone, too. So, hopefully you will not hear from me Thursday and Friday morning early, but in case we do make the call, that's the best way to get that information. You know, it's winter sports season, and so we have so many wonderful athletes representing the Twinsburg Tigers. And so, parents, please take a look at the district website where all of our information is known. We have so many, many wonderful students competing on our teams. And it's also the time of the year that we have so many holiday concerts. So please come out and support our kids. They love to see you in the audience. They love to see you in the stands. And we have so many great kids, and it's great that you're out there cheering them on in any way that you possibly can. Board of Education, at the last board meeting, I spoke a little bit about my concerns relating to our graduation requirements. For the class of 2018, that happens to be our juniors, the graduation requirements are changing. And so I invite you to take a look at my superintendent's message on the district website. I have put a letter out there about my concerns related to the graduation requirements. And I'm asking our parents to please get involved in a letter-writing campaign to Senator Frank LaRose or State Representative Christina Rogner. It's really important that we advocate on behalf of our kids. This is big news for them. Lots of changes coming their way. And if the parents can get behind the effort to communicate with our legislators, I think some great things can happen on the kids' behalf. The district PTA Council citrus sale pickup is going to be this Saturday, December 10th. So if you were able to support our district PTA, I sure hope that you're going to come out and pick up your citrus. That's from 9:00 AM until noon at the RB C Middle School auditorium. And while you're there, over in the cafeteria, we're going to be having a district PTA spiritware sale. So if you're looking for those last-minute gift ideas, this is a prime opportunity. And that sale will run along with the citrus pickup. So again, this coming Saturday, December 10th, from 9:00 until noon over at the middle school. Mr. Felber mentioned our phone survey being hosted by Triad Research Group. It's really important, parents and community members, if you get a phone call, please take a few minutes to answer the questions. It means a big deal for us so that we understand your perceptions of the school district, and we understand your opinions, your thoughts, your feedback about our schools. So again, these are randomly selected phone calls that are being made. And if you are going to be called, if you would please take a few minutes to answer the questions, we sure would appreciate that. We'll be providing a report to the Board of Education on Wednesday, I think, December 28th, at 11 o'clock in the morning over at the high school. I know it's the middle of winter break, but it will be an opportunity for us to provide the feedback provided to us by the community. And the Board of Education will have a lot to consider, I'm sure, when those results are shared. And finally, since this is the last board meeting before the winter break, I just remind the kids, I'm sure I don't have to, but school's winter break begins on Monday, December 19th. And the kids are off all the way through Tuesday, January 3rd. That's a long break. And I hope that you take some time to read some really great books and to write in your journals and to spend some time talking to your moms and dads and your family members and to put down the devices for just a little bit of time and communicate back and forth. I think your parents will appreciate that. They just want to spend some quality time with you guys while you're home on winter break and make it happen for them. That would be the very best Christmas or Hanukkah gift you can provide your families by just sitting down and having some great, quality family time with them. And so, without further ado, I want to ask Mr. Reese to come forward. We have some wonderful RB Chamberlain Middle School students to present today. And we're going to start with the middle school. We're going to shake this up a little bit. Mr. Reese is always saying he has to go second, so we're going to start with the middle school first tonight.
Okay, good evening. Oh, well, welcome. Thank you for having us here tonight. And yes, I'm always second. And I always complain because it's so hard to follow Bissell because they come up and they're so cute. And everyone just oohs and ahs over, and then I have to follow. So I guess I have to watch what I say because now I'm going first. So, we have our Students of the Month and the criteria for our Students of the Month. They show respect and consideration for others. They show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. They exert a positive influence on classmates. Exhibit leadership characteristics. Exhibit patriotism and democratic principles. And they show responsibility. Our seventh graders, for the November Student of the Month, when I call your name, come up. You'll get a certificate, a PIN, and we'll have you line up along the edge of the stage here. Anna Getz. Joseph Ray. Madeline Wright. Brody Zack. A busy time of year. Our eighth graders, Jasmine Johnson. Brian Nessick. Shayna Robertson. And Erin Wallace. All right, and we'll give a couple minutes for pictures. All right, how about one last round of applause for November Students of the Month? You can return to your seats. A couple of highlights for us over the last month. The Board mentioned our winter sports have started. Basketball opened up yesterday. Both the boys and the girls split with Hudson. And wrestling opens up today at Talmage. So we're excited about our winter sports season. We also just got the data in from our fall sports season. Our athletic director, Mr. Schwed, gave me the numbers for our grade point averages. We had 184 students participate in fall sports. That's about 30% of our student body. And 66 of those 184 students had 4.0s at the end of the first nine weeks. And overall, grade point average for our student-athletes in the fall was a 3.63. So they are truly student-athletes, and we're very proud of those numbers. Some other things that we've been doing, our choir concert, if you missed it, you missed out. Last week was fantastic. But coming up, orchestra on the 14th and a band concert on the 15th. We're very proud of the partnerships we've developed. We have partnerships with the course of Beach Brook. We have a partnership with community health centers and two new ones that just started. Couple of weeks ago, the kids worked with Akron General Cleveland Clinic, and they came in and did hypertension training with the kids. And then it was really exciting this week. UH came in this week for three days, and they did CPR training with our eighth graders. And I'd been in contact with them, and they said that, yeah, they come to schools and they do it. And we kind of had some miscommunication, and I thought, well, maybe they could train like eight kids or 10 kids. And they show up one day, and I said, "Well, how many kids can you train?" And I said, "Oh, we can do up to like 100 kids at a time." And I'm like, "What? We've got to figure this out." So, seventh grader's a little small yet to do the compressions. So we did it with our eighth grade class. All 350 of them did all three days. And we did it out of our health class, our PE health class. And you'd think that, well, maybe they weren't exercising that day. Oh, no. That's a lot of exercise they did because they have to give 100 compressions a minute. And so they put them on for like three minutes. The kids were exhausted. So it's a lot of work. And it's kind of funny, the song they use to time the compressions is "Staying Alive." The guy who was training them said that another song they could use that has the same tempo as another one bites the dust, but that one never comes out very well. So that was very great. And all the kids are going to get cards from university hospitals. They were certified in hands-only CPR. So that's very exciting. So that's some of what we're doing. Of course, we're looking forward to our breaks after our concerts and our finals and all the work the kids did the first semester. We're just very proud of our staff and our students and our community's support. So, thank you.
The moral of the story, Mr. Reese says, "Ask and you will receive," right? So, I had to have Mr. Reese go first because he always kids me about having to follow Bissell. So I'd like to ask Mr. Scott Winter to come forward. He's our assistant principal at Samuel Bissell Elementary School to recognize some outstanding Students of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk about our Students of the Month, recognize our Staff of the Month, talk about some building highlights. So we'll go ahead and start with our November Students of the Month. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, and other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. And we're going to start in second grade. And gang, when I call you up, we're going to go ahead and line up right here off of the first step. All right? So, first second grader we'd like to recognize is Luca Benitez from Miss King's class. We would also like to recognize the positive accomplishments of Jackson Burge from Miss Jolly's class. And from Miss Conrad's class, Ethan Kogan. From Mr. Harrison's class, Peyton Crosby. From Mrs. Holliday's class, Brayden Syrick. From Mrs. Doyle's class, Carson Langston. From Miss Balinski's class, Sophia Guines. And from Mrs. Springer's class, Brax Ruffin. Ladies and gentlemen, our second grade Students of the Month for the month of November. On to third grade. Ava Banich from Mrs. Cardenan's class. From Mrs. Rowwetter's class, Blake Baskin. From Miss Pop Galiski's class, Niger Baxter. From Mr. Labus's class, Indy Desarma. From Mrs. Angler's class, Isabella Fiani. From Mrs. Kinsella's class, Nick Marali. And finally, from Mr. Doloriso's class, Alyssa Resnick. How about another round of applause for these students? Before we move on to our Staff of the Month, just wanted to thank Mrs. Holliday and Mrs. Angler and Mrs. Willner for coming out tonight to support our students and staff. Thank you guys very much. But at this time, I would like to recognize our Staff of the Month. And our Staff of the Month for this month is Miss Katie Babcock. Miss Babcock, come on up. Miss Babcock was nominated by fellow third grade teachers, Mrs. Angler and Mrs. Watson. And they wrote, "We would like to nominate Katie Babcock for Staff of the Month." Katie is a teacher who's full of energy and great ideas. She has been a breath of fresh air. From the start of the school year, Miss Babcock has done a wonderful job of setting up a welcoming and engaging classroom. She contributes actively to our third grade planning meetings and brings some great ideas to the table. As a first-year teacher in Twinsburg, Miss Babcock is very proactive about asking questions and learning all she needs to know about her new position. She is well-organized and develops fantastic lessons for her students. She takes the time to establish a great rapport with her students and uses a variety of new techniques to make learning fun for her students in the classroom. We think she is off to a fabulous start and appreciate all that she brings to Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Congratulations, Katie. So, just a couple of highlights as we kind of wrap up 2016, which is kind of hard to believe. Most notably, in November, a group of us went to Washington DC to accept our Blue Ribbon Award. And that pretty much capped off a great year at Samuel Bissell. So we are really excited and really going to enjoy some much-needed rest. We'll come back strong in 2017 to have another great year. Just wanted to thank the community, thank the parents, thank the students, thank everyone for this great start of the school year. And happy holidays, everyone, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Mr. Felber, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. And again, congratulations to our students and staff. The work that you put in is obviously recognized, and you should congratulate yourself. You probably should stay for the entire meeting because it'd be educational. But I know there's homework to do, and I see some people doing homework out there. I also appreciate when you said that when she announced the date to the break, I saw that, yes, that doesn't go unnoticed. But now would be a good time. You're more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like, now would be a good time to make the exit. I can clear a room with the best of them. So we'll move on to committee reports. And the Finance Committee did meet and will report out in more detail in our work session on December 28th, the last work session of the year. And are there other committees that have met to report? Okay, we're at remonstrance, and I don't believe there's any blue cards. I'm sorry, what did I? What did I skip? Oh, I just, I always do that to these administrative reports. I am so sorry. Then I get the evil eye. Like, "What are you doing?" When we get to remonstrance, we have no remonstrance. But we are at administrative reports. So I will turn it back over to you, Mrs. Powers, as the room empties out for the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Mrs. Sparthing is going to click into our proposed 2017-2018 academic calendar. And I wanted to walk the Board and our community members who are watching the presentation this evening just through the proposed calendar for 2017-2018. Before I move forward, though, I just want to remind everyone that a number of years ago, statute changed relative to school district calendars. And the way it works now under statute 3313.48 is the Board of Education is introduced to a calendar, as we're doing this evening, and allows an opportunity for public comment. And you'll find that at the end of the agenda tonight. And then a period of time has to pass, about 30 days passes between the presentation and the point at which a Board of Education can ultimately approve a school district's calendar for the next year. So this evening, this is the first step of being in compliance with the statute. And I wanted to walk you through how it is that we created this calendar, the work that goes behind the scenes to get to the point of being able to present something, and then walk through the various dates that I think our parents will find very important as they begin to plan for the 17-18 school year in the summer, especially leading up to the 17-18 school year. That's important information for our parents to have. So this is how the calendar comes to be. We have in our school district groups that meet, lots of groups of teachers and administrators. But one in particular is the driving force behind the school calendar, and that is our Labor Management Relations Committee. And so thanks to the leadership of Mrs. Nora Suda-Riley, a member of our teaching group, and teachers and administrators, we meet and we suggest various different calendar options. And we settle on three that we believe may have some merit. From that point forward, there's a lot of conversation amongst the staff relative to that option A, option B, option C. And we provide an opportunity for the staff members to give input relative to the three options. This year, it was most interesting. The three options were very different from one another. And to be quite honest with you, it came down to two options being pretty close with the feedback as far as what people would prefer be starting dates, ending dates, winter break dates, et cetera. But the thing that we have to be cognizant of is another statute, and that talks about the end of the school year. And it talks about the fact that whatever date the school year should end, commencement would need to occur within a three-day range from that point in time. So we wouldn't be able to have, say, our commencement from high school to be the last week in August and then, I'm sorry, the last week in May, and the students getting out the first week in June because that would separate commencement too far from the last day of school. So we have to pay attention to those kinds of things. And we also have the need to make sure that the facility for which we have commencement, and it's been our practice here for it to be E.J. Thomas Hall, to be available for a date that would work within that range on our school district calendar. a date that would work within that range on our school district calendar. The other thing that we pay attention to is where the end of the year interscholastic activities might occur. We have students who are competing in spring sports, and we pay attention to where the spring sport competition, the state-level competition, regional districts, et cetera, fall relative to where commencement might fall relative to where the end of the school year is. So, it's a lot more than just looking at a grid with some dates. We take in consideration some of the end-of-the-school activities with our students, especially commencement, that is a big driver relative to the calendar. So, that's some of the conversation that happened behind the scenes. And I want to walk the board now through the calendar from August through May 2018. To begin, the proposed calendar would have the teachers reporting to work on August 14 and 15. August 14 would be our convocation day, our back-to-school meeting. August 15 would be considered to be a day-to-day, an opportunity for teachers to work together to review student records, start to plan together for the school year, which means the students would begin the 17-18 school year on Wednesday, August 16. Moving on to September, we would be having a day-to-day again on August, I'm sorry, September 1st, which would mean that the staff would report, but the students would not report. That would provide for a long Labor Day weekend, and September 4th is Labor Day. So, the students would have off for a long weekend, staff would work together on the 1st, and then they would be off for the long Labor Day weekend also. September 21st is noted as a professional meeting day. Again, that's an opportunity for professional development, and the students would not have school on the 21st of September. The importance of that date is that falls during the Jewish Holy Day of Rosh Hashanah. And so, we pay attention to where the holy days happen to fall and where we can work through our schedule. We try to accommodate the fact that many of our students are participating in events at the temple. And so, for this particular year, for 17 and 18, we're able to accommodate that. And the 21st would be a non-student day. The staff would be here for professional meetings. Yom Kippur is going to fall on the 29th and 30th of September, and it falls, I believe it begins at sunset on the 29th. So, we were able to not schedule Curriculum Day or Day-to-Day on that particular Jewish Holy Day, because it still would provide opportunities for students to participate in religious observance and not impact the school calendar. The bigger question that we're dealing with now, Board of Education, just a side note, is where homecoming will occur. Because of where those two weeks of the Jewish Holy Days happen to fall, where NEOA Day falls, where the end of the quarter falls, the high school administration is dealing with trying to find a date for homecoming that is going to work. And we may be wanting to swap out one of our home days or home game weeks with another school district in the suburban league to make it happen. So, just know, those are the kinds of things that happen behind the scenes when we're trying to establish the district calendar. Moving into the month of October, October 13th is NEOA Day. That is a day where many of our staff members participate in professional development. It's a day away from classes for both the teaching staff as well as the kids. And so, that's the long weekend there in the middle of October. And then, the quarter will end on Friday, October 20th. Moving on to November, Election Day is a day that we don't have students in school. And so, that will be a professional meeting day for our staff. That means the kids are off on Election Day in 2017, so that would be a day without the students. November 22nd through November 24th will be the traditional Thanksgiving break, and so that's noted on the calendar. Moving into December, the quarter would end, or in this case, it will be the semester will end on Friday, December 22nd. And winter break next year will begin when classes end that afternoon. But on the calendar, it looks like it starts on, it looks like it starts on Christmas Day, but actually will begin at the end of the day, on the Friday before the 22nd. And winter break will proceed for the students all the way through, seems like a long time, through Tuesday, January the 9th. The staff would be reporting back on the 8th for their records day and half professional development day. The kids would be out of school until the 9th of January. And you can see that's being driven by where the Christmas Day actually occurs on the calendar. It gets a little sticky depending on where that day falls. The 15th of January is Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, and so that would be, of course, a national holiday, and we don't have school on that day. Moving into February, February 16th is a day without school for the staff and for the students, and that will make a long weekend break for the President's Day weekend. Board of Education, I just want to remind everyone, when we have off on the 16th of February as well as the 22nd of November, those are days that are swapped out for the fact that our teachers work conferences. And so, it swaps the hours that they work for conferences for the days to be off on those two occasions. So, that's how that occurs on the calendar. Moving into the month of March, the end of the third quarter will be on Friday, March 16th. And then, spring break is going to be at the end of March. It will fall from Monday, March 26th, and we're actually having that day off, because it's my birthday, just kidding. Monday, March 26th, and it'll conclude for the students on Tuesday, April the 3rd. The staff is actually going to be back on Monday, April the 2nd for Professional Meeting Day, but the students will have one additional day off, and they will report back to school on that Tuesday. And then, we do have one more professional day on April 20th. That'll be a day-to-day. And the importance of that, that's the day, Board of Education, that our teaching staff takes a look at the student-student growth measures. It's the end of the teacher evaluation cycle, because by the 1st of May, all things need to be committed to ET-PAS. And that's for both the teaching and the principal evaluations. And so, to have that day as a day-to-day is important, because the teachers can finalize all of the student growth measures and get those committed into the systems that we use. Moving into the month of May, you can see that the students' last day would be on Thursday, May 24th, and the staff's last day would be Friday, May 25th. That will mean that commencement will likely fall, of course, earlier that week, somewhere between the 21st and the 24th. So, that's the proposed calendar. As we mentioned at the beginning of this report this evening, if anyone wanted to comment, there would be an opportunity at the end of the agenda. And then, on the January 4th Board of Education meeting, we'll be putting the calendar back up for your consideration and hopeful approval, so that we can get this information out to our parents. Again, we're proposing this this evening to you, Board of Education, parents. It's just draft until the meeting on January 4th. You will not find it posted except through the agenda for tonight's meeting. I don't want any confusion as if this is the, you know, we're going to move forward with this until the board actually moves in January on the recommendation. Any questions about the calendar?
No, just thank you to the staff and administration. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of meetings and surveys that go out. So, as you said, you're not just bringing out a blue and yellow pencil and filling in some dates. There's, you know, a lot of moving parts. Also, as one of eight districts, part of Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, it was recommended in the law, but not, you know, made as strict, but that the joint vocational school calendar be synced whenever possible. So, I know, I think seven of the eight, eh, I should turn to Mr. Curtis. Most of them follow that as, you know, so if you have a student that's also attending CBCC, the breaks sync up, which is important.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, just before I left the office today, I received an email from Dr. Roebuck, who's the superintendent at CBCC, asking for our dates. They're trying to coordinate eight districts, which is a huge responsibility, hard for one to coordinate it, let alone eight. So, and their big concern is where, obviously, the long breaks happen, the winter break and the spring break. They were most interested in knowing what the proposal was.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? All right. And again, just as a reminder, it's a 30-day window that starts tonight, be a public hearing tonight, and then final action is anticipated at our first meeting in the year of January. You said 4th, or is it 5th?
4th.
All right. Any remonstrance come in?
No.
While we were talking. All right. I jumped the gun sometimes, just to see if you're paying attention to those administration reports. We do have a need out of normal sequence for executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion at 7:40 that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 7:40 to discuss the discipline and employment of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A. I made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0. We are in executive session, and we will be reconvening a little later this evening. Thank you. Reconvene, Mr. Aho, if you call the roll.
Mr. Felber? Here. Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
All right, we are reconvene. We are now at Treasurers Report and Recommendations, and without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read J. 1, 2, and 3 concurrently. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of November 16, 2016, and special meeting of November 18, 2016, as sent to the Board under separate cover. J. 2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of October 2016, Bank Reconciliation General Fund Financial Summary Report, Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the Board under separate cover. And finally, J. 3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of October 2016, the total payroll, total, including payroll, $3,930,327.22. Is there a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any comments, Marney? These are the, pretty standard, monthly. Any further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those three items pass 5-0. I will now read K. 1, 2, and 3 concurrently, again, without objection. K. 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit K. 1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. K. 2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. K. 3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Of special note, as I flip to the right page, I want to commend and congratulate Lisa Seidel on her retirement after 28 years with the district. Any further comments on personnel for those three? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those three items pass 5-0. I will now read L. 1 through 6 together, again, without objection. L. 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the donation from Ohio Pile, Prince, Ohio Pile, Pennsylvania, to the Twinsburg High School in the amount of $60.71 to be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies, per the attached exhibit. L. 2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached exhibit. L. 3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers and rates based on start time for the security events for the 2016-2017 school year, and permit the superintendent to employ additional personnel as needed. The times and dates, I'm sorry, the times and rates are there, and the officer listed is Tyler Bunch. L. 4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for the overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Wrestling Team to travel to East Little Pole, Ohio, for the King of the Hill Wrestling Tournament on December 16, 2016, and returning on December 17, 2016. The cost of the trip is to be paid in full by the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters Wrestling Account, as sent to the Board under separate cover. L. 5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Band and Orchestra to travel to Orlando, Florida, on March 22, 2017, and returning on March 27, 2017, to perform at Walt Disney World. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the students, with the support of the Twinsburg Orchestra Boosters and the Twinsburg Band Boosters, as sent under separate cover. L. 6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with Walden University to place university students in our district for the purpose of pre-service classroom experiences, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those six items as read?
So moved.
I'm going to go with Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. And again, thank you for the donations, as always. Any further comments on those? It's nice to be able to accommodate the universities and our future teachers. So, that's a university we haven't seen in, I think, listed in a while, so that's nice to see. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those six items pass 5-0. L. 7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the replacement of a blue 2016 Ford Transit passenger van that was totaled in an accident by Liberty Mutual with a new 2016 Ford Transit van at the cost of $941.29. Replacement for the 2016 Ford Transit passenger van will be acquired from Ganley Ford of Norton, Ohio. This is a permanent improvement fund expense. Is there a motion for that item as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Any common cast? That's pretty much standard replacement for...
Right, this is an insurance claim.
Yeah, it's an insurance claim, that's why. Can't normally buy a van for $941.
It was, just to make note, it was held at the last year's price, though.
Thanks once again to the negotiation skills of Mr. Waldron, and keeping costs down where he can, so making a bad situation better. Any further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. L. 8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education hold this public hearing to give a full notice of the recommendation of the 2017-2018 academic calendar, and to provide an opportunity for public comment for the attached exhibit L. 8. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? We've talked about the calendar, seen our administrative report. This is part of our 30-day due diligence to make the notification now. And I guess, once this passes, we'll open up the floor and see if anybody wants to comment. Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And that passes 5-0. Is there anyone present that would like to talk about the calendar? All right, seeing none, there's many opportunities. For those listening at home, can contact the administration via email, via phone. And 30 days from now, at the next nearest board meeting, we'll anticipate a final reading of that announcement. Anything for miscellaneous?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I want to reiterate what Mrs. Powers has already spoken to with respect to the graduation requirement change, and the work that's been conducted, and testimony that has happened at the State Board of Education with respect to what is likely to happen if ODE or the State Board of Education doesn't act, and how it's going to impact the class, the junior class currently. Last I understood, when we first, when we were first pushing for this, it was likely, or at least it was seeming likely, that the State Board of Education was inclined to do something sooner, not later. And it's, I'm beginning to hear that the president of the State Board of Education is not inclined to do something... is not inclined to do something sooner, but later. So that being said, I want to echo the importance of the community to make sure you contact our elected officials and let them know loud and clear that they need to act, that they need to put pressure on the legislature, and the legislature needs to put pressure on the State Board of Education to do the right thing, to do the right thing for kids. We can't afford to wait for people to make decisions when they want to make decisions when they impact kids, so I want to make sure that I reiterate that. The other piece that's going on, as you know, right now, the legislature is in lame duck session, and there are a lot of things that are happening, a lot of activity tends to happen, and bills tend to get shoved through because it's lame duck. One of the things that's, some of the activity that's happening right now with respect to online charters is that the online charters that have been audited by the Ohio Department of Education and have been found to have been over, have overstated their enrollment and are in jeopardy of having to pay back monies, are now lobbying the state legislature to encourage them, to give them safe harbor from the consequences of the financial ramifications for overstating their enrollment. So again, this is another call to action, that we need to make sure that we're on the horn with our elected officials, strongly encouraging them and urging them to resist these requests. I have done so myself, and every resident, every constituent, if they did the same, there's a high likelihood that this, this, this proposed change would not, will not happen. We may, we need to make sure that we keep the pressure on these folks to do and continue to do what's right for kids so that we can not be impacted, continue to be impacted negatively financially by folks that are in it for profit and not educating kids. So that's all I wanted to say.
In the past, Mr. Powell, we've had maybe some sample language when we've looked...
Some guidance?
Yeah, and is that something that we might want to do or we've thought about doing?
Right, the letter that I wrote is the December Superintendent's Message.
Okay.
Gives the, it doesn't address the charter school piece. It talks about the graduation requirements, and it lists the current ODE requirements, the high school, our high school requirements, the 22 credits, and then it talks about the impact of the point system on the class of 2018.
And contacting, obviously, Senators LaRose and, and, you know, Rick and our... Would it make sense to add the president of the state school board to that, or Mark, do you think that does any good, or just put it onto the legislators to...
I think it's, I think the legislators are right, the right way to go. And, and to be clear, Senator Laner has made it clear to the State Board of Education that if they don't act, that the legislature will, so we just need to continue to keep the pressure on.
We've seen it before, where the state board has promised to act, legislator backs off, you know, and we end up with a report card that isn't what they promised it would be. We saw that once before, we all backed off the pressure because, you know, legislators put the pressure on the state board, said they would do something, and then they turned around and did whatever they want. And, you know, as a reminder, in my last report, at the last meeting, we talked about this board and the superintendent administration representing, and superintendent's rally on the Hill, and, and that was the topic on, on graduation requirements as well as, you know, high stakes testing. So I refer to, a little bit longer report that's posted online under the President's Report, you can read, read a little bit more, and there was actually a nice article in the Twinsburg Tribune talking about the same topic from, from that last board meeting. Anything further for miscellaneous? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and we are adjourned. Have a good evening.